Tell you how to stop.
Didn't, why didn't you say?
It's like the one in the, or two in the morning.
Well, actually, there's no need to say it.
Oh, my God.
I bet.
See you down there.
All right, call meeting order. Settle the roll call.
Okay, Mayor Meney.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Nelson.
Almost late, but here.
And Jones.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda or motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Call of favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? There none? We're motion approved minutes from May 20, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Call of favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're motion approved regular minutes from May 21, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Call of favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anyway, no bills to move on. All right, so move on to the public comment section. This is a chance for public input on any non-adjutant items. We can't take any action on them unless specifically listed somewhere else on the agenda. So anywhere, any public comments?
Very. I want to make a little thank you and stuff to Dennis Baker, his wife, Brian Mattis. They rebuilt the Porsche pits last Friday and stuff. They furnished the material and stuff for them to sit here. They spent all day there so they could have a turn and stuff. Put all new lumber and stuff in that pit area and stuff. Just to kind of thank them for them three people that set them up and helped them out in part.
Dennis Baker?
Thank you.
Any other public comments? We got a 7:05 hearing. We can't go to that quite yet. We're not there yet. So we're going with the first reading of ordinance number 658. It's the ordinance format for 2019 appropriations from our budget review. So, any comments, questions, anything like that from what Teresa's got on the back of that on 2019 appropriations? Yeah, it's first reading.
I'll take motion for first reading ordinance 658.
Second.
Got a motion for second? Discussion? Not at both?
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go to visitors. Amy has the only season four report.
All right, we welcome back three returning guards, Abe Lorraine, Hannah Drew, Michaela Starett, our new hires, Ashu Ror, Haley Tobin, Rachel Eichman, Ali Ossain, and Luke Fleck. Luke and Michaela also helped as assistant managers along with Paige Hamish. This summer, we had a good start. The weather was warm and a lot of nice days. We started scheduling daycares to make it more manageable for the staff and patrons as well. Seven daycares were scheduled for mornings and afternoons. Four of the daycares were in Hartford and the other, we had three from outside, no Hartford. Since we started scheduling these, it has been much more manageable. It hasn't, we haven't had any trouble with capacity since this, so that's helped a ton. Again, this summer, we offered two swimming sessions for swimming lessons. The first was in June, the second in July. Both had good attendance. July's always better just because warmer weather. We sold 246 family passes and 98 individual. There were 22 pool parties, that including the fireman's party that we give to Barb every year for volunteering her time. And a lot of people get them just because they use them for end of the season activities or birthday parties or just get togethers. Barb Tyler has been great help to us. She administered another training session at the beginning of the season. Lifeguards perform five drills throughout the summer. These drills help improve our duties and responsibilities. Our season came to a close August 15. I want to thank the city employees and the council members for their work and support. Our goal is always to make sure it's safe for the patrons. Also, thanks to the lifeguards and assistant managers who did a super job. Any questions?
Yeah, sure, why not? And I don't expect to know the answer from them and ask it anyway because I might have to go this way. The numbers you brought about the family passes and pool parties and so on. Any idea where those compared to last year?
I did look at that last year. It was, we were down individual, but we were up just a little for family.
Okay.
So, we increased a little bit on the family, not much, and then short like by 10 maybe for individual passes, so, yeah.
And pool parties, no idea?
Pool parties, I think it was the same.
Okay.
And usually it's always, our pool parties always tend to get busier in July and August just because the weather's warmer, but, and a lot of people don't even know about them. I mean, they hear it from word of mouth that they're going to start calling, but a lot of times towards the end of the season, those weekends get full, so we probably could have more just they want them to, they want to do them on the weekends and we only have that slotted time from between hours, so 5:00 to 6:30 before we open, so that's the most popular one, so I think there would be more, but there's already research.
And I ask because, you know, there, as you would know and know more than you probably is, is that we had such a hard time competing with, you know, Wild Water West and so on and so forth. Do you feel that that's a reality still or, or, I mean, is it a moot point? Where, where does?
I think our daycares are increasing, obviously. Like, I've never seen so many daycares now at our.
Yeah, sure.
Just within the last two years, I mean, I've been scheduling, we've always had the major three, like Imagination State Care, Christ Luther, but now, you know, we've got Step in Stones, we've got Kinder Academy from Sioux Falls comes, Crooks comes, Colton comes, Trinity comes. So, our daycares have increased and I don't know if that makes where more people don't want to come during those times, but the people that are going to come are going to come because it's convenient. People that buy Wild Water and those passes are mainly like, I think, you know, we buy those season passes, so a lot of our kids are going out there because there's more to do, but, I mean, I like the small town pools, that's how I grew up, but you're going to get, you know, you have some that can do both, like the veterans, they do both. They're here, another, they probably go to the Wild Water West, but, yeah, I don't know as far as, I know we lose some every year, but it's at age group two where I think we get more little kids now because of our water, you know, the baby pool.
Right.
And that's increased because they love that, because we've got more capacity for that, so I think that's increased for the little kids, but I think we lose kids as, like my kids when they get to middle school, they're like, I don't want to come.
Gotcha. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah. Any other?
Great job with the pool this year. What's your, what have you been getting scheduled? Thank you all.
That helps, so I appreciate that, that, that's, it's worked out so much better and we've worked, care, worked with them and tried to make it so it's more reasonable. Beginning of 30 seems like a lot when you have an afternoon, so I have not just care coming, I have two daycares coming in those afternoons, so I've asked them to kind of, I said, if you work with me and bring more numbers in the afternoon, then you could come another day in the morning, so, you know, it's just communicating, so that's helped a lot because it's not just them that's coming. I've, I've got at least two daycares in the afternoons and two in the mornings almost every day, except maybe Fridays are kind of late, but I don't feel like we have to have it stacked for daybreak, yeah, yeah.
Is what we're charging in line with other communities, do you know, I'd be at an opportunity to research that.
I looked at, I think we're less than Colton. Some alert, well, I know we're cheaper than Sioux Falls as far as I think day passes, but every pool is different. You, I mean, I contemplate where I feel like, yeah, we could charge more maybe for like the family passes because it's great for a family that has more than three kids. You know, when you have two people on a pass, it's like two individual passes, so you're not really gaining anything, but like if I had three kids on a pass, that's awesome deal for $65. I mean, I could see a family pass if you have more, so, I mean, Teresa and I talked about maybe figuring out something different for individual passes and family passes next year to make it where maybe over three, you pay a little more just because it's not, I mean, because we have some people that's got five, six kids on a pass, that's awesome. You know, most of the kids that come every single day or twice a day, and so they're getting to come mornings we have available, which is awesome because there's no other pool that is open in the mornings like we are. So, we have offered to them in the mornings except for swim lessons. They could come in the afternoon, they could come in the evening, so there's, because some families that come three, three times a day because, you know, they don't have anywhere else. I mean, I was kind of one of those kids too. So, I think we could raise those, but then you kind of want it to be affordable for those kids that can't, so that's a, that's your call. It's, that's hard to decide because I do want, I feel like everybody should be able to go to the pool in the summer, the kids that, you know, can't afford it, so, I don't know.
Sort of feedback.
Yep. Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, now we'll move to the 7:05 hearing for application for retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license for Bump 48. So, any discussion, any questions for Chris on this application?
Yeah, what's a South Dakota farm wine, license, farm wine? I just kind of curious because I grew up near, close to Midnight Colony and I kind of know what that is.
I, I don't honestly know.
So basically, those are South Dakota wines, those that are.
Prairie Berry.
Yeah, those are South Dakota wines.
We're farm, just kind of, you know.
That's how license re, and if you guys remember when we renewed the malt beverage license, you know, back in June, they basically combined all the malt beverage license into one, so you used to be able to get an off sale license, not an off sale, a wine license, so they took all that and just combined it into this one, so whether you're going to sell all South Dakota wine or not, it's part of the license, so.
It's like Prairie Berry.
Chardonnay, yeah.
Those, they're all farm wine.
Yes, because they're grown and manufactured here.
Got it.
Good question.
So is there anything you need to do, Chris, if you're going to sort of, I don't know if you're going to do food or not, is there anything, because I see there's a, like a retail liquor restaurant, is that?
No. So what the lick, the restaurant license is, it revolves around the liquor as well, but in order to get a restaurant license, you have to basically be a restaurant. You have to have servers, you have to have so much, 60% of your property has to be from non-alcohol sales, you have to have table service, I mean, you have different criteria.
So we're just.
And that's, I said, that's not the.
We're just kind of.
Yeah. This is basically going to allow them to have malt beverage.
All right, that's not, I was just curious, that's curious.
Pizza.
So what's the, what's the portion of approval of local governing body? And then it's got app, application approved for Sunday outs, off sale operation. Are we going to discuss that or is that not part of this?
We fill that out after it gets approval, so basically we've got to fill in the dates of the hearing. This is for the state side because we fill this out and send it to the state, but basically we have to mark any if they have Sunday sales or operations, which isn't part of this because that's an extra $200. The state checks to see if they've paid their taxes to date, so.
No, will that answer my question because if you want, if they want on, or Sunday sales are charged more?
Yeah.
So it dictates whether it's Sunday sales or not.
Right.
So this would not be.
This would not be, yeah.
Make it a motion approved, the retail off sale malt beverage and off sale South Dakota farm wine license for Buffalo Ridge Burling Project LLC.
Second.
Second, discussion? Oh, Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen.
What's the date?
Thanks, Chris. I can work on that. I need to go sweat. Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, time for reports. When we get down to, we're going to go through and we've got Chair Deputy Report, very former report engineer, we've got several items under engineer. When we get down to public works, finance officer, city administrator reports, I'll probably ask you, and even city engineer reports, touch on any high points where you're needing either action, guidance, or direction. Otherwise, we'll, we'll take what's in your report and what's in the packet there. If anybody has any questions, let's, we'll jump to it, but if you have something you want to discuss and you want action, guidance, or direction on, just make sure you touch on it here, so. We'll start with probably full report from the Deputy Department of the Alachi.
Probably, well, the main thing I was going to talk about for last month, we had 21 vehicle stops, I think that was a part of some of the stats I provided you. We did have, I guess a theme would be drugs, what happened last month. Within two days, I served a felony fugitive controlled substance warrant in Hartford, pulled a vehicle over, did find meth in the vehicle. That was one day. The next day is, of course, the evening when the apartment garage just started on fire and that was meth related. So I'm starting to think of whatever I think the problem with meth is, it's 10 times worse than that. And again, we're feeling the effects of being next to Sioux Falls, but, you know, I think about home, they're going through the same issues. So, I mean, it's just something that we've got to be aware and deal with and understand that is, it is part of this community. The vehicle stops, I think, at 21, so that seems to kind of stay steady. We had some marijuana arrests, we did have another fugitive that I found in town that had been missing for a while on Broad and state probation. Just happened to be, I mean, there's just, very little ties to the community, not really from the community, just staying somebody that's living in the community now. So, that's kind of what we're seeing. We did have three car larcenies last month. That increased significantly, significantly after last night, but that would be September's problem, not August. August, we had three, we did have weapons, two firearms, long guns taken out of one of the vehicles. The rest was packed cigarettes or whatever, so that was, we did, we did have footage of the person doing it. I was working with the person that had the footage and although I, it's out of my pay grade to authorize anything being placed on Facebook, I informed her that I am not in the position to tell her what to do with her video footage and if she wanted to put it on, it was up to her and I was not going to stop her, so. We went through that several times. I said several times, I will not stop you from putting this on Facebook, which kind of segues into the other issue with Facebook. 90% wrong most of the time, by the time the information gets to me, caution, obviously everybody taking that information as a law enforcement or some kind of report. It does get kind of confused with time and some of the details. We did have a record of a white man in the southwest part of the county, which was, they were up to no good, but it had nothing to do with kidnapping or snatching or anything else. Within the next week, I was chasing her on white vans. Again, you know, having people see, oh, it's a white van, call it a name, well, there's a lot of white vans in town. One of them was picking up girl scouts, so I stopped and talked to them a little bit because they were called in by some little girls that were scared of this white van. Again, it got confused, that got confused with another call that happened in Hartford. One thing I would urge people to do is, is call 911. I think people are assuming that what goes on Facebook, that they've reported to law enforcement. I did find out that it never was reported to law enforcement. So, if it's not reported to law enforcement, credibility goes down for me. If it's important enough to put on Facebook as far as being a crime, it should probably be reported to law enforcement. I would urge if you hear something or somebody says something to you, to have them call 911 or the non-emergency and we can deal with it. And, and obviously people are in a heightened state of awareness of suspicious activity, you know, what happened in Iowa, and I'm okay with that, totally okay with that. Just, you know, just be a little reasonable on, on what they're reporting and we can check it out, but I did talk with the school, some of the things that I've done, they've talked about doing a self-defense course through the school. Now, I would just like to, I, I think they'll probably charge for that just because of, I think you're going to have Tycondo instructors come and do that. I was talking to Sarah a little bit. I'm not going to charge, but I said I'd be, I'd be more than welcome to come in for an hour and just talk about personal awareness, personal safety, and then let the, you know, that'll be for free, not necessarily promoting the self-defense part of it, but at least give the community something that if they wanted to talk to me about personal safety, some ideas that I have. I am a defensive tactics instructor, I don't know if you want to, they would allow me to go that far, but I think it'd at least get people aware and talking about what we're doing and I think it would put some people's minds at ease, you know, that they can do something or say something or, you know, make them a little bit more aware. If they want to, I mean, we'll offer it. Last night, just an overview, had, I've got about 13 reports of car burglaries that are still coming in. This has no ties to Sioux Falls whatsoever, it has ties to a gang in Sioux Falls. They were, with the great work of one of our deputies, they were caught, they were able to find out the location of where they were at, they did a search warrant on the place and were able to retrieve most of the items that were taken out of vehicles. No weapons, maybe knives, but no firearms were taken at this, you know, that I know of, but this time, they're still logging some of the items, but what's nice about having the search warrant and the reports that are coming in is we can match every, every piece of stolen items that we can match to that vehicle as being a property owner, that's one more count. There was some prescription medications that are controlled that were taken, that has been enhanced this immensely, as far as basically you're stealing controlled substances. So that's going to, you know, increase things and, and this'll, you know, as far as going on, but more likely what we're doing right now, we know who did it, now it's just a matter of just tying everything back to wherever it needs to go and see how many counts that we're going to give them and that, that type of thing. But it was good that, you know, like I said, Deputy Jastre was the one that was working on it, he did an excellent job, and they preceded him and they just carried on. He did the search warrant, got it signed, executed the search warrant, got interviews, so basically the case is solved.
Good job.
That usually doesn't happen with these car burglaries. Yeah. So that was good. Any other questions about what went on this month? As far as if you hear something in the community and I haven't told you, I try to, you know, as soon as I hear about it, I'm trying to let the mayor know because I think he's in a position, in your position to know what's actually going on, so that's just kind of a courtesy that, you know, I'm willing to do as soon as I find out about it.
What was the timing of this deal last night, was it late or was it?
I have no idea what the timing was, other than it was this, it wasn't the night shift that got the reports, it was the morning shift, they start at 6 o'clock in the morning, and when I got to work at 7:30, they're, they were meeting, they had already were going to the location where the items were stolen. What's, what's nice about tracking electronic devices is you can pinpoint where they're at. Yeah. So. I think they'll probably do a release, maybe do something on the news too, I don't know, I hate that Hartford in the news for this, but I'm pretty sure they're going to say that it's just really, you know, it's, it was a random, but it could have been Kent, it could have been us, it could have been whatever, but now, and they're looking for two things, they're looking for cash and guns. That's their, that's their motivation, that's what they're looking for, and this group of people did buying guns in Sioux Falls, so they were suspects in some of the stuff that was taken in Sioux Falls. Guns and cash, whatever they would get. They did take some credit cards and some knives and some stuff, but most of it was small stuff, but still we can tie it back to them, which is kind of nice, you know. It's always nice to, for them to take a credit card, it's someone's name on it and then they report, you know, where it was stolen, when it was stolen, and it was all last night, it wasn't a two or three day thing, it was, it all happened last night. And again, I hope the 24-hour coverage, we get in, you know, the guy that's stuck in down there driving around a park, they're going to drive by and say, this ain't worth it, you know, and be on the lookout for this type of stuff. So, and again, encourage people to lock your cars. They're not breaking into cars, they're opening open doors. And even the people say, well, I never have nothing in my car, you still feel violated. It's still your property, it's still your insurance papers, your whatever garbage that you have in the glove box scattered all over, someone's been in your car, you're a victim. You feel violated. People kind of forget that part. And the garage clippers are as in your house, by your door.
That's what I always hammer on at my house. It's the, got a big, got a big door open right there.
Yeah.
Mitch and Clark, I had, this is, I was able to take a couple of days off in the last couple of weeks or so and, and, which means I stay up later, which means I sit on my deck and I, and I, and I listen and, yes, I sound like Gail Mark, I know. But do you attribute, and I got it on video, you know, I've noticed a difference this year.
Check.
You know, first off, Craig, how's that bathroom hanging up, is it still standing?
So far.
They haven't knocked it down yet, I mean, okay, I mean, and so, so from a, from a residence perspective, who's really tuning in on, on, you know, any, you know, things that have happened in the past, this year really stands out to me that, hey, quiet stuff, I mean, I'm usually there till about 11, 10, 11 o'clock and, and, and I'm standing and I'm, I'm trying to peek and Craig's told me some of the hiding spots up on the rafters of the shelters and stuff and, and, it's, it's a vacant area, man.
See, I know we still have kids that are going, are doing there and our kids that are hanging out, but they're our kids.
Yeah.
They're kids from town.
Yeah.
There's still a little bit of accountability for some of the stuff that's going on in there and even it's the naughty kids, it's our naughty kids.
Yeah.
We don't have other towns' naughty kids here and I think, I think that, like you said, I think the environment has changed by a bit.
I mean, it's like, there's been a trickle down effect of some sort. Can't pin it to any one thing outside of just, you know, you guys finding a few people and word them out, but, but.
And I always liked the idea of locking the bathrooms and just getting out of their car and walking around makes a difference.
Yeah.
You know, being able to do that.
Good.
And I think we're 50/50 probably on the bathrooms getting locked.
Yeah, sometimes.
But it's still, it's still better than what, you know, it is, it's still better and it's still on their mind and I think they're, whether they get it done or not, they're still doing patrols.
Sure.
And I think the calls for service remain the same, is it 291 or something like that? And that's all kind of hangs around the same. But that's good, I mean, it's, when we started community policing, they came in and said, I can't understand, our calls have doubled now. Yeah, but our crime has gone down, you know, the people are calling in more because we're telling them to call in, which then prevents, you know, us being able to make contact with somebody or a suspicious vehicle. You know, the people are calling in more because we're telling them to call in, which then prevents, you know, us being able to make contact with somebody or a suspicious vehicle. Some lady pulled up and on our side streets and was finishing up some paperwork on a real estate deal and called in a suspicious person. And she goes, I have no problem with that. I, you know, I've been here for an hour doing paperwork. Someone comes up and checks me out, I've got no problem with that, cause I'd say you were called in, she's like, people are paying attention, people are, you know, doing that. Good. Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Sarah.
Chief Schumacher. Would you approach, wanna thank you and entire fire department and everybody volunteers for everything you did. Couple of weeks back after the last meeting, that was a long, long night and I know you guys saved a whole bunch of property that night and protected a lot of lives. That fire was really close to that apartment, that next apartment building.
Well, it actually got into the next apartment building a little bit, so we got lucky, you know, on that call. I guess I really attribute that to, uh, the partnership we have with the city of Hartford and all our other entities we work with, but to me it came down to good training, good equipment and good execution. And you guys are just as much part of that as all the members we have here, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, kind of a recap, I, I missed, uh, the last month's meeting on you, so July we had twenty-four calls total, eleven of them in Hartford. August saw a little bit of an uptick, very busy month. We had forty-one calls total in August with twenty-four of them in Hartford here. Again, along with the aforementioned, uh, structure fire that we had going on, so very busy month for us, hopefully that trend does not continue. Uh, some of the training things we did in, uh, July and August, EMS side, we worked on oxygenation and ventilation along with patients with disabilities. Uh, fireside, we had emergency vehicle operations and water rescue training. So that's kinda what we've been doing, other than just, uh, running a lot of calls.
Sure.
Uh, we have, uh, fire prevention week coming up in early October, scheduled to begin with the schools here. Again, be going into the elementaries with the burn trailer and then to, I think it's, whichever it's eighth grade or freshman, uh, we'll actually give them a little bit of a presentation on how quick a bedroom can go up in flames and again have a live fire demonstration going on at the school.
Good. I think when you and I talked a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned that equipment, everything you had held up pretty well for that big structure fire?
Yep, held up well.
Takes a toll on things like hoses and all of that when you get that much heat and you're using it for that long, is that right?
Actually, everything fared pretty well. I'd say the, the biggest thing we had is, uh, just getting our people recovered. It ended up being a long night, almost all, you know, went to work on two hours of less asleep and then we turned around the following night, uh, finished putting everything back together plus had a training, so.
Never stops.
No.
So, yes, I, I, I did after the, all the commotion and going, holy crap, that sounds like it's one of my three, in words three, so I did from a distance, uh, be a looky boo, I admit, I admit. Was that our log truck?
Yes, it was.
It was?
Yes, it was. They, they got it up and in place and, and really that was the difference maker between, uh, that drive spreading to, uh, the apartment building to the south or not. Having that elevated waters, water stream and high volume water supply, we were able to, uh, essentially put a barrier up, barrier up between that exposure. Uh, that apartment building had, uh, about five apartments that had windows broken out, uh, siding burnt, a lot of the wiring on the exterior for the air conditioners melted and burned. But had we not had that elevated water stream, it probably would've been a lot different outcome.
Pretty cool.
Uh, with that fire, we had, uh, a lot of agencies involved and that was Purdue.
Were ten deep?
Yes, it, it was, and on purpose, and this was the prime example of why the county has it's set up the way it is. Um, we had ourselves Humboldt, Holden, Lyons, Crooks and Sioux Falls out, out here, a lot of emergency management. We had, uh, a staff of more than sixty firefighters and support personnel that night and, and we truly needed every one of them by the time we got, uh, to the overall and, uh, final cleanup on everything. But that allows us to rotate people out, to keep people fresh and minimize the, uh, heat stroke, heat waves type issues.
So I don't, cause I don't know, are those apartment sprinklers? Do we have any code for sprinkler requirements in Hartford?
There is a code, but that, that one didn't need it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's so many, like, so many levels, so many occupants, there's a code by it, but they didn't need sprinklers, I don't believe.
You wouldn't get a, you wouldn't get a sprinkler code for a detached garage?
No, I'm talking the actual Hartford itself, so, yeah.
I'd have to build a shop with Paul Clark for sure, cause he gets all those plans, but I don't.
I don't think they are.
I don't remember them having.
Another thing that came up was first codes and I don't know what, what's normal, what's not is, you know, there's no, this was open rafters across all twelve and no sheet rock, you know, anywhere in that, so it's, it's, once, once it starts, it's a door and a door.
That had a large, large effect on the fire spread in the garages, the way the garages were separated. They had, uh, oriented strand board on the walls in between, but only up to the sidewall height. The truss area was wide open between each and one of the stall spaces that allowed the fire to start in the one stall and rapidly spread from end to end up in that truss space. Uh, had there been full barrier in between, I think it would've been limited to just a few garage spaces.
We need to revisit our setbacks. That, that other apartment looked awfully close in hindsight.
But it's really no different than what we have downtown or a lot of the other houses in town.
We're supposed to get smarter as we get older. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Chase.
Thanks, Chase.
From the city engineer department.
Uh, well, as part of the project school, they've been going well. Um, we've got three action items on our report that we want to go through and the first one being the Van Mark roadway improvements. Um, just to give you guys a little bit of background, you know, we're currently under contract for the sewer project. And I believe we set up a pre-construction meeting for next week, or we're trying to get this up for next week. So that should be getting underway. Um, but after your budget meeting, Teresa and I discussed, I'm like, you guys were, uh, wanting to maybe proceed with possibly Van Mark Avenue, the roadway portion. Um, so she asked that we submit a proposal to her to include on an agenda and that's what you have in the packet. Uh, so this is, uh, an amendment to a current contract to bring on the roadway improvements, waterway improvements, construction improvements. I can go through it and I don't know if there's specific questions regarding or if you guys wanna talk about the project itself and where it's heading.
I, I'll just stop you right there. Isn't it a rule pretty mature at this time, Teresa, to be talking about engineering services to complete the engineer that road when we haven't secured all the right away yet?
Well, the only way, so we secured that five go right away on the plat that he's filed. We need to.
But that's just for the sewer, right? That's not for this?
No, that's the land right away.
We secured the land?
Well, he hasn't told me a price he wants for it, but he submitted a plat that has the right of weight on it and we filed the plat, so.
The right of way is dedicated.
He has dedicated the right of way. He still would like to work out some kind of payment or a reduced assessment.
The right of way's been dedicated, it wasn't just a construction easement, it was the.
The sewer has a construction.
To begin with, but since, since that got approved, he's come forward now with the plat already.
When did all that happen?
Couple of months.
Two, three weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Was there an email to that effect that I didn't read?
No, because I had just got it to him, like after all the signatures just this, yeah, last week, so, oh, yeah.
You caught me off guard.
And, and I wanna be clear, I mean, he says he will work with us and for a reasonable charge. He hasn't said, I think he wants some kind of payment or I think he's actually looking at a reduced assessment, whether it's, you know, instead of a hundred dollars, right away fifty or seventy-five. He says he'll be very reasonable with this, but he is gonna go ahead and plat it and dedicate that right away, but I think he's still gonna come forward with a proposal. So just so you're aware of that.
Which he has done, what you just said he has done.
Yeah, yeah.
Has filed on the county.
So the plat has been filed with the road dedication to the city?
Yes.
So there's right of way on both sides of that, no phantom art?
But one thing we don't have is NAPS. He hasn't plotted anything yet, but I think he's a done deal, I mean, obviously he wants the street.
That's a lot of concern though.
Yeah, that's just that, that, I'm not concerned about that, so, so I think, he, and, and Roger's totally on board for getting the road done too. He, he wanted to do this plat because he's looking at maybe putting some multifamily, developing that for a lot too, and he's in favor of it, so, yes, he's, that's why he, that's why he plotted it out and dedicated it there.
Guess that answers my question about maybe he's not too certain to talk about it.
No, so I think we can start it.
And I think from our perspective, I mean, it'll take us all three, four months with the plan together, so if you wanna hit that January, February, good time for me, we'd like to, to be able to start moving on that.
Well, we definitely need to talk about it.
Learn something new again.
We don't wanna bid this in March, right?
So I think the biggest question comes around, you know, we spent federal forty-two thousand on, on some of this already, proposals, some of that, and this is in addition to that. Help us understand what's all in this, why?
So when you flip through the proposal, we've got broken down into project description initiation, survey, you can see we're actually utilizing the survey that we've already conducted. So that's been credited. Um, usually there's a preliminary design phase on an agreement like this, but we've already done that as well, so that's been credited. Um, so what you have here is four go within the final design. We're basically taking that preliminary design and adding the final detail to the plans and developing construction documents off of that. Um, so four is that final design, five is developing the construction documents. And six takes us through the bidding process and advertising. And then seven includes construction administration, so that's representing it out in the field, watching the job, making sure it's built to this better, pay request and those sorts of things. Eight, there's construction staking that's provided on the project. Yeah, we have a list of additional services, you know, that aren't included in here, but we don't probably anticipate needing any of these items, but we just include them in the source.
We just got some more and done, didn't we, on bad work?
Yeah.
We just had two, two spots.
Yeah, we did, yeah, for the sewer job, yeah.
So in the, in the big picture, the additional, the additional contract amount will get us to the finish line?
Yeah.
Do we have a, refresh my memory on what the hard number was for that total start-finish project cost? One and a half, eight, no, one point eight?
That's sewer and everything? Yeah.
Teresa, have you put any numbers together on how much money the city could recapture with, with assessments?
No, I don't have that number available, cause we'd have to look at what we could recapture with assessments and then what we could get for loans possibly or possible ground.
I think we had that in the preliminary plan, but I just, I don't recall what that number was.
But prior to, prior to was one point four, five years ago. You said, is that your question? With the, the?
Uh, no.
No.
No? Okay.
Yes, about assessments, what we could expect to see come, come back from assessment policy, but I think we had that in the preliminary plan. I just don't recall what that number was, so.
I don't, I don't wanna throw cold water on the contract tonight, but I would, I would much rather know before we agree on a new construction agreement, to have the big number for the total project minus whatever we can assess out. So we know what the city's debt obligation is gonna be. And then, uh, and then figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for that. And then, and then move forward with the agreement. Cause I, I don't wanna, I mean, I don't wanna finance impact the government. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, and I know we could, we could probably do it and get it ready, you know, we could get it turned, key ready and then put it on the shelf. But in my mind, if we're not ready to pull the trigger in two thousand and nineteen, why spend my, put it on the shelf? So, you know, what, what I'd openly like to see is us figure out what the city's portion's gonna be, figure out how to pay for it, and then pull the trigger on the contract and then build it next year. Would, would be the, would be the way to go. But I don't feel comfortable agreeing to a contract, you know, when we don't have those questions answered. That's just me.
Have we done any initial investigation, any numbers against it, Teresa?
No, not really, cause I thought tonight's meeting was to get direction from the council if you wanna pursue this or not, so, yeah.
And then the one point eight that you're talking, that's just to go from thirty-eight to?
Yeah, I think, I think Travis had it there. I think we had an estimate for Van Mark towards the back there, Van Mark on its own.
Does it go to the city limits on the board?
Yeah, pretty sure.
Well, where we are on both sides of city limits, I mean, we're got a little chunk on the west side, but we can't, we don't have it on both sides.
To the end of NAPS probably.
It's by the end of NAPS probably.
Yeah, see, and that's another thing, how much time would it take to get, get that dedicated from NAPS?
Uh, yeah, you'd have to either, you know, the easement or, or dedicate on the plat, yeah.
It'd be nice to wrap it up in, you know, on the wall.
Well, I think what Mitch is getting at is that they have the direction to move forward, that's gonna take them three, four months to get this, you know, ready. Some of those things can be done in the background while they're doing this, but.
You're not gonna submit a pay request next month for two hundred and three thousand?
No.
We can, we can give this thing a green light without, without laying much capital to get it started. We gotta kill it if we don't figure it out in, in three months?
Sure.
Is that, out of that one, I mean, that one eight, I just want to jot some numbers if I can. So out of that one eight, how much will be, how much would you take out for where I already started?
Uh, we had, I think we had.
Well, how much was the period, what was the project?
It was about two hundred dollars for the, the sewer project.
For the sewer?
Two thirty, if I remember it. I think we had fudged it around, around two hundred in those numbers, so we exceeded that, we've been on that job. Um, but overall, yeah.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty-five thousand is what the sewer portion.
Yeah.
There's still one and a half, one point six.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were.
So, I'm really stupid with some of this stuff, but I'd like to know how we're half as much as Mickelson on that short run? Cause Mickelson to me seems like a pretty massive project.
Yeah.
This up here is like four blocks or whatever, five blocks? How's that half as much as something out here?
Mickelson's got, I mean, we got, we had a million dollars in just that box culvert structure that's in there.
Exactly. And I'm thinking one point eight is really high. Compared to what we're doing out here. Like, you see what I'm saying, we spent four million out here for a million dollar box culvert, so now we're down to three million.
Yeah.
And we're doing how much more distance?
Five and a half.
Yeah, we're doing this, I mean, Mickelson would be about a mile. Van Mark's about, you know, it's longer than a, than a half a mile there, if I remember it. I don't know, I can, I can evaluate it a little further toward the market and see. The only thing I can think of is we do have to do a stone sewer extension. Um, probably all the way to the edge of the golf course to get over there, so that kinda lopsides Van Mark Avenue there a little bit.
Cause we're running down.
Yeah, we gotta run down the night to get over there, so that, that kinda is a little different than a typical street, I guess, there. I don't know, I can look at that a little closer for me.
I'm just trying to, I mean, obviously I wanna get this done, but I had it on my moment one day, I'm just like, where's this number coming from, from what we're doing out here, because this four million dollar contract might, nothing to share.
Yeah, it's structured, it's already going there.
You may have to compare to this.
Yeah, let me, if I can look at that and maybe follow up with you and just, trying to give you a little bit of perspective there.
And are we planning three lane, curving lane, or just two lane, regular city street, curving yard?
This can be, is, I think we're planning a forty-one foot street, which is basically two lanes, parking on each side.
Yeah.
A parallel parking on each side. And then that, when it reaches the highway, that'll give you the availability someday in the future to have like a left turn lane.
I think there's enough questions out there for some of this that it may not hurt to have this back on for our, for our next meeting if we can get some of those questions answered. Just looking at financing and some of that, have it on for next meeting. What other questions?
I got two thoughts. Mitch, is this, in your one point eight estimate, is that, did you factor in some for your?
Yep, that has.
So this isn't going to be an amount of above of that figure?
Right. At, well, I don't remember if we included our engineering, I don't know. I can, I should call.
Yeah, that's why I was curious. I didn't know if we were one eight and then we're throwing two hun on.
Yeah.
Maybe two million on the side. Then Mark's going to be more upside down than what he already.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he really.
I would have that too.
And Teresa, where are we at? Where is the golf course set on this? Are they going to be assessable? Are we, we're going to.
Everybody will be assessable.
So, just, just, just to throw some numbers around, straight line, Mickelson, not the curve, thirty-seven, thirty-seven. Van Mark is twenty-one, seventy-one, from thirty-eight to the city lines. Take four million divided by thirty-seven, thirty-seven, it's a thousand. Um, it's a thousand, uh, let me go by history here. It's a thousand seventy per foot. Take that times twenty-one, seventy-one, this project should be two point three million. They can use it, Mickelson numbers.
Did you take out the million dollar box cover?
I didn't take out the million dollar box cover. So take out the million dollar box cover and take the three million.
And I think this is where, that's where Mark's getting at.
It probably would be pretty close.
Divided by.
If I remember it on this, I think a lot of it was with the drainage, because the drainage is so flat down that one intersection there.
Then it's one point seven four two. Do you want us to, do you want to pair up with those both schools that you're going to pivot?
All right. Do we have more questions from council? More things you want to see, or do we have a motion to approve?
There is a question here that tells us how much we're going to capture.
I know we got the footages somewhere, so we'll look at, we'll get that information.
I'd also be curious if there's enough footage with the golf course and say one other person to kick this thing out.
I know we did that evaluation. I'm pretty sure we thought we had enough support on the job to help the golf courses, but it was closed.
But you don't offend. I mean, if the golf course and two property owners can, can make this thing go away.
And that's what I was just going to bring up. I mean, you guys need to be thinking about reservation necessity, you know, if you're going to do an assessment, getting that in place soon too, so that you know whether you're going to have that. If, if, if people protested along there, you know, they could kick that, that assessment out. You guys still have the ability to override a protest that comes through with a two-thirds majority vote. That's kind of new legislation, legislation that's come through a couple of years ago.
Well, I know we can, I know we can force it done, but I just do not force it done.
So, and that's what you guys, and just so you know what, what options are, but you really need to get that reservation assessment given to be that in order to.
You got it, Karen.
I was going to say that. I, I put in my report. So Justin, Ike, you know, he has the property there. He did come in last week for a petition. He's going to go out and engage that to see who we have in support of it or not. So, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks, we may have, be able, you know, we have that back to see. And then Mark, are they not on board? So he was going to carry that around. I don't know where he's at with it, but he just picked it up like last Friday, I think, or last Thursday or Friday, so.
It's two weeks.
That would be helpful.
No, two weeks.
I'd say you'd let it sit for it. Put it back on again.
Thanks, I too.
When you come up with some more information than.
Yeah.
Okay, the next project we had was the Swetland Park Sports Complex. We've got an action for a pay request. We've got two other items that we want to discuss, and Ross is here to help with those. So I'll let him kind of run with that project, Ross, you know, go through those.
Okay. There's too many details on the project, but there's been significant grading work up at the sports complex site, um, as well as down on South Street. And by there lately, most of the grading and topsoil work is done. There's some finished grading. We haven't got a CD yet, but, um, things are going along well there. We, I talked to the contractor, um, of RFP for grading the two ball fields, of the two new ball fields for egg line surfacing. And the contractor said that they are just swamped this fall and, you know, their time is more valuable, I guess, and they didn't even want to put a number to it. They, they basically said that if, if they were going to stick around and do that actual little bit of grading work for you guys, that it's going to be a very, a crazy scene. It's probably not worth it, you know, at this time to do it. And.
So, so just at that point, we feel we should just let the contractor finish their project, grade it. I would just assume we have it seeded. And talking to Craig, we think we'd be better off just coming back and digging that area out once the grass is established, we put the egg line in. Cause even when you come and put the egg line in, that grass isn't sowed down and established, it's just going to be a sloppy mess, but we'll, we'll even get to it with egg line, so. So, and plus, if you dig it out now, you're going to have, it's just going to hold water. And I just, I think the right thing to do is just to seed it and come back later and dig it up.
The other item I was going to mention, um, we will have to have an RFP for the contractor and another one here. Because they, while they were excavating, one of the piles of dirt out there, we thought was just a stockpile. They found an old concrete, something or another, I guess, buried.
Structure or something.
Yeah, a structure, it was concrete and some other rubble. Um, so we'll just have to put it on the RFP, I guess, to them to get rid of it for us. It's approximately sixty feet long by eight feet wide or so, kind of based on my rough measurements.
Where's that?
Is that swiped though?
Yeah, just, um, kind of in the middle of the soccer field area, kind of halfway north and south between those. And then there's that big stockpile off to the, to the east, and it's about dead center in there.
Yeah. Remember, remember we talked about.
So Terry, what was that?
Remember we talked about that stockpile? And it's not really a stockpile, but as actually, when we look back, with the grading project, we cut down those, those soccer fields enough that that looks like a stockpile that was left over, but it's native dirt. And that, this structure happens to be right in there. So we didn't find it when we did the first, because now they're getting to that native soil and they find this concrete structure that's buried underneath there.
It's six feet long.
Well done. Well done. He's still alive.
Yeah, we don't know what.
And I don't know if it's all structure or something. It's just debris and random bits of metal and, so.
What are the odds?
Craig, we need to have that new pay order?
Not in time.
So we've directed them just to avoid it for now until we get a pricing agreement to get it pulled out of there. So that's what they're working on right now.
Is it, is Hartford special in this manner? Because I can't, I can't keep track of how many times this city's just been minding its own business and all of a sudden, oh, hey, you know.
Oh, angry.
Oh, we found eight by sixty foot of concrete buried out, you know, where you're digging.
Agreed.
Wait, you know, is this, is this a common occurrence in small town America?
This is, I'll tell you, this is the first time I've run into this type of situation, I guess, where nobody, nobody knows what it was once upon a time, so.
I'm going to have those dirty.
Now with Satan hot springs, I mean, he nice to be out, Lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good.
So this has never been touched from the beginning of the work out there, never been touched. And so now they're getting ready to move it.
Why can't we ever find anything good? We always find disaster, we always find problems.
You think, give you pot of gold.
Maybe, is there gold in there?
Sewer line on there.
Yes, there is. Maybe it's a sewer line.
So the last thing I was going to talk about the sports complex is the pay request number two for one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Covers some of the grading on South Street, um, bulk of the grading up of the sports complex and a little bit of the topsoil.
I'd like a motion to approve the pay request. Second.
Motion second? Session?
I'm there.
Okay. Motion is paid pay request for the grading for our missed drainage, one seven two three forty-one. My, Jones.
Yes.
Or, Brenman.
Wow.
Brenman.
That was so hard.
Yes. Keel.
Nelson.
Yes.
I have one question about the grading on South Street. Is it my imagination, or did they make that south edge straight and not follow the town toward the creek? Because in my mind, I would think you put fill as far back as you could, just because that will affect building setbacks and actually usable lot space. Cause I, I think that south edge is literally straight instead of going back. It is, Jesse?
Yeah, it does, that's.
See, in, in my mind, I would think you'd fill, you'd just fill two copers of the creek instead of making it, instead of squaring it off. Because some lots would be more, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I know there's a proposal out there, but in the grand scheme of things, if you, if you go as far south on every lot as you can, you're just going to gain usable space.
Yeah.
And that, and that will, that will affect setbacks.
I think we're kind of squared up. Ooh, look at it. I think we're squared up at the property line.
I think so.
They're good straight. I wonder if they just went to the property line.
Yeah.
So they just went to the property.
The property line doesn't follow the creek.
The property line doesn't go into the creek on any one of the corners. And so they think they did bring it in a little bit.
Well, that makes sense.
So you actually have a little fill now on South?
I assume they're already done. Do we know?
Uh, there's a little bit of work out there, but yeah, the fill is all out there.
Fill is all down there.
Yep, they've just got some topsoil to clean up.
Cool.
Can we take down a self fence on the front lawn per, or we're going to have to deal with that with some.
We'll have to take it out once they get the, that's kind of the one area they still have to throw some topsoil in that area behind the curb. And then we'll have to take it out and see.
If we went to the property line, that's good enough.
Okay, um, now I'll jump to Mickelson then. Um, the one item I have, um, for action is the pay request number four. But if you have any specific questions about the project.
Well, it seems like now that we've got the crushed rock, we've turned it, I mean, it's a racetrack already. You cannot believe how many cars were down there over the weekend.
Really?
I, it is unbelievable. I'm sitting out in my patio and it's like the road's open. Debson, is this open? I mean, they are, there is cars pass there all the time. Now, the, the things weren't closed, pulled shut. And I was going to go out there and drag the barricades. I thought it might drive them. Somebody's going to come and drag them back so they can drive down there. Cause everybody wants to go down there and look. And now it looks like if they kind of wheel their way around, I think they can get all the way to thirty-eight. I think, I seen people come and go down past my place. I didn't see them come back, so I'm assuming they followed their way out or they're in the creek.
It's possible, but it's possible.
They can get out.
Yeah, Travis, no, I won't say Travis was one. But it, and I, I've told you about this before. I mean, it's just, it, it amazes me how many people.
You want to take it out now?
Oh, no. I want to pave because I'm sick of the dust.
Oh, okay.
Over the weekend before we got this little bit of shower, it was dusty. It was dusty. So, anyway, I'm going to quit, I'm not complaining.
Before we move on, I'd just like to know what it's going to take to make you happy.
I'm very.
I'll tell you what, every step of this process could be good, not been happy.
I'm very happy. I'm watching out for the citizens of Hartford right there. I just, it just is, it's amazes me.
Do we need to mag water that construction though?
I don't want to mag it. So I'm having a motion to approve pay request number four. We've just got construction for twenty-sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. Second. Look at how quickly they copy on.
First, motion is second? Session? Nelson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
From Jones.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question?
No.
What? I'm not asking you, I'm asking the mayor. Mayor said no too. Mayor? Okay. Uh, what's the plan for sidewalk, where would, give me just a quick rundown. What's going to happen?
Um, so they have probably a thousand feet left of, uh.
All in.
Gravel and fabric to do.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Concrete crew should be in behind that to do curtain gutter.
Okay.
Uh, and from what I've heard, they plan on doing all, all the concrete, we have some out there again, so, so they don't have to come back.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? Good. Thank you.
I got to thank someone.
All right. Craig, anything from your report that you're looking for? Questions or action or action?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Like I said, the slurry seal's wrapped up. Um, shelter, we're supposed to try to have that ready for ribbon cutting on the fifteenth. I don't know if we're going to make with the way this weather is. I've already sent a email out to Troy, just to kind of give him heads up. If we can get the concrete to get full set tomorrow and concrete done on Thursday, we'll make it. But I mean, it's, it all depends on how, it's a muddy mess.
Over the block, there it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's got to be.
Yeah, it's soaking rains have not helped. Um, then we, library, all we got left for that for the ribbon cutting or grand opening of that is just to get the sign put up, uh, sign poster in place. We'll be putting the sign up tomorrow and we done, so. That's all I got.
Does it make sense to street sweep while it's raining?
Justice is going to try to get out today. We've just been so swamped behind and stuff. Um, hopefully tomorrow will still be wet enough and get out tomorrow, so. Yeah, it does make sense to be able, but it just, we're so far behind.
Sure.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Karen?
Nothing more than what's on my report.
Nothing more than what's there?
I have one question, one more question for Craig. When, when does the pool actually get empty? Uh, I know it doesn't get completely empty, but is it still at?
Yeah, um, we're actually going to, usually about four or five days later, we start pumping it down. Um, we got no pump that we're going to use, so we keep it out of the sewer system, just pump it out down the, either the storm sewer net. Chlorine's out of it now, so it's safe to dump it in back there. Um, Neil just got the pump together today. And I think he was going to go up to today and try to start pumping it down as well.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any questions? Questions for Karen? Anything from that finance officer report? I'll just move to Teresa. Anything you have for your report?
Um, just want to mention, we did do the interviews for the recreation group after this last week, Arden, Travison, myself. We, before we, um, recommend any action, we're going to look in a little bit to doing that internship that we previously did, kind of dig into that a little bit further. So I'm going to contact, um, a couple of the colleges in Sioux Falls and see if they've got programs that we can look at and kind of pursue that avenue and on the bull from there. And, uh, kind of the other thing that's not on my report that I do want to mention tonight, that, um, I got a phone call. While I was talking with Speed Connect today to get a little more information regarding, you know, their request, it's going to be later on the agenda. But they told me that our agreement with the school, um, they'd like to terminate that. Um, here's the situation on that. And they haven't done any work. And it's totally on Speed Connect's end that they, um, can't find a direct line of sight to make all their equipment work. Now, this should have been looked at if you asked me before anything was ever brought to the city, which he says his guys should have looked at. But, um, because of, you know, issues with trees or other structures, they can't get it to connect all, so they can't use our water tower. So it's not, I said, you know, it's not an action item, you know, we have to terminate the agreement, um, tonight, since I just learned about this afternoon. So I'll put it on the next agenda. I just want to give you a heads up. Um, I did tell the guy, I said, you know, that's, I'm sure probably not the issue since we haven't started any work. But, you know, we have expense, attorney fees and getting. attorney fees and getting the contract drawn up, I said, so the city will probably be looking for reimbursement of that. And he says that's totally agreeable, they understand that, so when we find out from Larry what those expenses are, we will build Speed Connect and get our, you know, recoup back, so. I will put that though on the next agenda since, you know, it wasn't on this one, so we'll give you a heads up on that.
This, this is the same, this is the same Speed Connect that just went into another five-year lease with us?
Same company, yeah.
And they, they signed a lease for this for the school? And then they, this one, they put up their.
Well, the agreement with the schools between the school and us, Speed Connect's doing all their work though. They're, they're giving up their service.
But now it's not working because they don't have.
Yeah, now they determined they don't got the right, the site connection, the right connection they need, so it's not going to work, so. They can't utilize their water tower.
The case that Teresa's describing, it would be the, the school that's out if we didn't terminate that lease, not necessarily.
Yeah, our agreement's with the school and, you know, we're not paying anything per month except that fifty-dollar utility charge, you know, but.
Okay, right, just a.
You should have employees.
So.
All right, any other items?
Can that make things different?
Questions for Teresa?
Comment, and I should have brought it up during the sheriff's report. But I did have somebody complain about, um, fighter Nicholson. Yeah, fighter Nicholson.
Doesn't have stop signs.
Sure problem, right, sounds.
I think it's always a problem. Yeah, I'll, I'll tell Karen about it.
And I said, I'm very happy to your attention. Ben Martin, Barti. Speaking of, speaking of signs, I think at the fire station, Craig, there's a speed line sign right behind a tree. Is that right?
Oh, they're all over town.
Yeah, we got some trimming to do, yeah.
We got trimming for the sign?
I ain't got one, her just can have a sign moved, yeah. There's a lot of trimming needs to be done though.
For the ashtrays. We could, we never did readdress who's going to be responsible for that.
The boulder.
So Jenna? That's hopefully whatever, bring the place for next.
I, I put that in my report, we're, we've been talking, I think we're, yeah, going to try to come up with a policy for the boulevard trees, we've been talking about it as one thing, and then put together like an action plan for the Emerald Ash Board, kind of two separate things.
Let me know before my boulevard tree get too big, so.
They don't go too much in a couple of weeks.
Done, I'll trim them one time, right at the bottom. Say, all owners of Assle.
We have nothing under our old business, under new business, we got mayor appointments for city engineer and city attorney. I'll do them both in separate appointments, my intention is to reappoint Stockwell and to reappoint Freebird Nelson in the H.A.S.T., so. Start with first one, for city engineer, appoint Stockwell engineers as our city engineer. So we'll make a motion, second, approve that, and discussion, vote.
Make a motion to approve Stockwell and city engineer.
Oh, second.
And discussion. None? Both? Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mine?
He's having trouble with these.
I am.
He's, that was very good.
All right, Freebird Nelson and H.A.S.T. for city attorney.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mine?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, and this isn't necessarily an agenda, but I just want a heads up, um, the appointments or the filling the position, I don't know if appointments are a report, filling warrants position, plan on having that, have the agenda for next meeting. Had contact with some people and I just encourage you, if you've got some names and you want to reach out to me, let me know between now and next meeting. Or if you want to talk about some of the folks that are interested in it, give me a call. We'll talk some of that over, otherwise we're planning on trying to get that filled out for our next, our next agenda, two weeks, so.
Have you reached out to tell anybody who you're thinking about? Was that in an email? Because I didn't look at it?
It was not, this is your notification, I guess, is if you, if you've got questions about who I've talked to, just give me a call. And if you've got other suggestions, give me a call. So. Karen? Next item up is to review and approve two thousand seventeen, I think, report.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Discussion? None?
I guess I'm discussing.
Okay.
So this pretty much looks like saying that it is every year about what we're doing.
The figures are pretty, yeah.
Because we don't have enough safety vision.
Oh, yeah, that we get every year, which like I said, about ninety percent of the cities get that just because we're too small in office. You know, what they'd like to see is one person does accounts payroll, one does receivable, one person does the payroll, one person does the human resource. Well, I mean, we don't have staff.
It's the same every year.
Like I said, we get things done.
But other than that, everything.
Yeah, you know, I reviewed it and it looks very representative of our annual reports and our figures, so. We're still the black, that's good.
I'm not worried about being the black, I'm more worried about the broad waste of abuse, so. They haven't caught you yet, so.
Yeah, chill out in jail.
Now we got skate going, we got new skate going.
All right, we got a motion and second, any other discussion? Okay. Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes. He's working this off.
All right, next item up is to consider contractor vision on the water tower states with Speed Connect. Teresa's got some pretty good data on it, just good discussion on that in the packet. Um, I would, before we get into a long discussion on this, I would suggest, I think that we, Larry hasn't had a chance to look over what Speed Connect is proposing to us. And, um, so before we get too far down our avenue, I'd really like to make sure that we refer it to legal. This one is not time sensitive, they already missed their, their, basically their deadline to, to, to do something before the remit, before the lease automatically renews, you know, and maybe the window and they missed it. Um, they, they know that. Um, but it's not as time sensitive as our last thing was with the schools, it seems like so. Anyway, background, if anyone discussed about what's going on with this one, I guess.
So I made on, just to catch up a little, what was in front of you today? I just received that today, this amendment that was on your desk. That is what Speed Connect is proposing for, and like I said, just got this this afternoon, Larry's out this week, so he has not looked at this, so I think, like the mayor said, you know, we definitely want to be able to review this. But what they are proposing with this amendment is that the, the dollar amount of the lease would, wouldn't change. And I failed to put that in your report in front of my attention. We get about twelve hundred dollars a month for, a little over that, and so it'd be about fifteen thousand dollars a year that we're talking about. Um, that was put into our budget figures, that, you know, that's a revenue source for us, so. Um, when I talked to him, I said, you know, we're already doing our budget, we already have that amount locked in. So what they want to propose is that instead of doing the five-year lease, do every two-year leases. With the first year, um, they can't get out of it, they're locked into that first year for that amount of money. But then thereafter, after that first year, if they give us, you know, sixty days notice, then they can get out of the lease. And basically, it says they get out of the lease with a provision is that they lose their frequencies, not just for any reason to get out of the lease, but it states here that they, you know, cannot operate anymore because they lose their frequencies, so. You know, and these days are just because they don't want to renew it, it would, that would be the caveat.
And the sixty days is only.
The sixty days, I'm trying to record, is for renewing every two years. If they lose their frequencies, then it's a thirty-day notice.
What's the thirty days?
If they lose their frequency. So, so I kind of explained in my report, but basically, um, Sprint bought their frequencies. And they have, um, towers throughout a ten-state area and they battle with Sprint for these frequencies all the time. They're so, the frequencies are so close, the way I understand it, as I was talking to him this afternoon, is that they have a lot of interference, so their service isn't very good. So Sprint bought their frequencies and they're leasing them back to Speed Connect. And so they don't anticipate any change, but now they can't control their frequencies. So Sprint decides that they're going to not lease them to them anymore, basically they're out of business. He indicated to me, you know, they have a clientele and bases here and they want to keep going, but, you know, they can't control that. So, but, which is really their issue, but.
Pardon me, is, one of the reasons I want Larry to look at this too, is if, if they aren't, let's just say, for instance, the reason they don't want to do this because of that frequency thing. And if they're, even with five-year leases with them or whatever, if they're insolvent at that, they're out of business. Working more. But I just want a little direction on that, but.
The, the two things that strike me, number one, the first thing that strikes me is the dishonesty right out of the gate.
Yeah, as soon as I got that letter. Why is this dated?
I mean, that's. To, to me, to me, if, if this were a situation where, hey, you know, we got a problem on our end, you know, and, and the new guy missed the ninety-day deal, you know, can you work with us, that's one thing. But just to come flying out of the gate, changing dates on paperwork, you know, that just makes me want to say, here's your five-year contract, you know, take the new guy out behind the woodshed, you know, and just pay the bill. That's my, that's my first, my first inclination is, is when your first move is to change dates on paperwork, I'm, we're, I'm talking to you. The second thing is, is this proposed first amendment for lease. Because it would be my guess, and I don't know whether Larry will, I'm not an attorney, I just pretend to be as smart as one. I would guess that if we accept this, then this piece of paper will rule. And then that gets you quote-unquote a two-year lease. But it speaks about after the first twelve months of this lease, because I think if, if we, if we grade like this, twelve months later, you're going to see a cancellation within sixty days and it's done. So I, I think this is a piece of paper to get them to cough up one year of lease and then wash their hands of it. That's what this reads to me like, so. I don't think they have any intentions of honoring a two-year lease, and I don't think they have any intentions of signing another two-year lease. But I might be a little jaded just because of the whole, hey, let's just change the dates on this paperwork and pretend like we know what we're doing. So, but I don't, I don't like the way that reads, but I, I would love to defer to, uh, to counsel.
Make a motion, table to, I can read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any correspondence to discuss? Any need for executive session?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See if you start it one again?
Hey, it's work.